Welcome everyone to today's Governance and Transparency Committee meeting. We've got Mayor Harding, councillor Milligan, councillor Kunselman and myself councillor Madison in attendance. For apologies, we have apologies raised for councillor Johnic and councillor Doyle. So I'd like to move that a leave of absence be granted for both of them. Would anybody like to second that? Seconded by councillor Kunselman. We'll put that to the vote. That's unanimous and carried. Do any committee members have a declaration of interest to make this morning? All right, there being no declarations, we'll move on to the confirmation of minutes. Do any committee members have any discussion on this matter today? Would anybody? Yeah, it's not on the... Yeah, I missed it, fair enough. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. Back on to the confirmation of minutes, would anybody like to move that? Councillor Kunselman, seconded by councillor Milligan, any discussion? All right, I'll put it to the vote, those in favour of adopting the minutes. That's unanimous and carried. First substantive matter today is the online community engagement platform extension to contract. Do any committee members have questions, Mayor Harding? Other questions related to procurement or the community engagement branch?
Thank you Chair, it's actually related to the product itself, so not the procurement, so the community engagement area.
Call on the relevant officer.
Good morning Mayor and councillors, Melanie Rippon, Acting Engagement Manager.
Through the chair, thank you Ms Rippon. How was, how were we, obviously when this came out for the first time in 2019, it was the first for our council. How have you found the platform itself? I know we're sort of just sole sourcing, staying with them, is there a reason why we didn't go at, yeah, why we're staying with Hive?
To answer the first question, the platform is quite intuitive. There are a variety of tools, it's, you don't have to be an expert to use it. The expertise comes in the selection of the tools and the development of the content around access and inclusion. So use of language and images and things like that. In terms of moving it forward, so we would like to undertake a review over the next 12 months to look at aspects such as reporting, data, comparison of the tools with other providers. Other aspects such as the administrative support we would get from the provider. We've mapped that out over the next 12 months and depending on the outcome, we would either go to market again or continue on with Hive.
The feedback I've had from residents is obviously at the moment you sign in, so you have to have your email address, which can be whatever. Can you explain the reasons for that, why we do that rather than a non-sign in model?
So the sign in allows us to capture demographic information about the participants. So when we're reporting back to council, we can give you information around not just the number of people and the sentiment that they're providing, but things like the age representation, gender, cultural background, place of residence in Ipswich. So that signup process gives us, gives us a richer dataset in our reporting.
And what privacy arrangements do you have in place to protect the privacy of residents who provide that information?
So we have a privacy statement on the platform and everything is in compliance with the Information Privacy Act. And we work with legal to make sure that, that everything is in accordance with the legislation. So we have a special, when we download and manage data, everything is de-identified. We often use password, or we do use password protection on our files. And at times if it's very sensitive, we'll put things in a lockdown folder on an objective.
Thank you. And can councillors access, access those individual responses and people's names and things like that?
De-identified datasets, that would go through general manager approval. But, but yes, I understand that, that that is possible, but we do de-identify everything, so personal information isn't shared.
Okay, I just want to confirm that councillors don't have access to people's personal information?
No, it's, it's the, it's the sentiment information and aggregated demographics.
Thank you. Thank you, I don't have any other questions Chair.
Do any other members of the committee have any questions for the officer? Councillor Kunselman?
Community panel, can you report on that?
Yeah, sure, as of yesterday, we had 59 members sign up. We've done a quick crunch of the, quick data analysis of the representation of that against the city's wider demographic profile, against some core demographies. We have good gender representation, cultural background representation is, is okay. But for some multicultural groups, it would be great to do some targeting to promote the uptake of people from culturally diverse backgrounds. And the panel members so far have indicated a wide variety of categories that they'd like to be engaged on. So it's, the, the registration and the program is in its early days. We launched a week before the floods, which, which was a difficult time. But 59 members within a month is, is a great outcome so far, considering everything.
And I understand it's easy to register.
Yeah, so the first step is registering on the platform and that captures most of the information. And then it's just completing the remainder of the information. So we do ask a little bit more information for panel members. But it's so we know more about them and we can target the engagement to their interests.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the committee? All right, thank you Ms Rippon. Would any members of the committee like to move recommendations A and B on this matter this morning? Moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Kunselman, any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour of adopting recommendation A and B. That's unanimous and carried. Our next matter today is the proposed fees and charges to apply from 1 July 2022. Are there any questions for the relevant officer from the committee this morning? There being no questions, I'll see if there's anybody willing to move it. Councillor Milligan, seconded by councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? Mayor?
I guess looking through this, I appreciate the openness, especially attachment two, Chair. I thought it was quite good to show what was charged last year to this year. It shows the, the price difference, but also the, the percentage difference. I thought that was a really good attachment. I can see that increases range from zero percent, most of them around that below CPI. But some things have increased more than that. I think, I would mind a discussion on the fact that we are looking at increasing the, the tip fees from $12 to $14. We do get a lot of feedback from residents. Maybe I should ask for a relevant council officer to go through. Council already heavily subsidises that fee, whether we have a discussion on that, is that okay with you Chair?
I'm more than comfortable with that this morning.
Is Mr McAllister there or the relevant council officer? Mr Madigan?
The general manager of that department is here, he's coming to the lectern. I nearly called it the stand.
My apologies.
Set a new trend.
You've got the gavel there too.
I assure you, Mr Madigan, you're not on trial this morning.
Good morning Mayor and councillors, Sean Madigan, General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Mr Madigan, you know, you would know, through the chair, you would know that we get a lot of feedback on the, the $12 tip fee. How much does it actually cost the rate pays of Ipswich every time someone turns up?
So it is around about, I think it's approximately, depending on the tonnages, but per visit, around about $25 per vehicle, is my understanding.
So it costs the rate pays of Ipswich about $25 and the $12 goes towards that?
To subsidise that, yeah. The significant increases in expense have been as a result of a number of factors, including the recycling market. Expenses there, disposal costs at landfill. So as part of the state government's strategy to try and divert waste from landfill, they brought in the waste levy, which is something that is charged to councils as well, we do receive a rebate on that, but not all of it. So what has happened in the last sort of three years, as the, the city and the state and the country are transitioning to this new environment of diverting away from landfill, our costs have actually gone up. In the longer term though, what this will enable us to do is invest in, in new infrastructure. There is the alliance with the other councils to reduce our recycling costs as well for the construction of a materials recovery facility. So whilst there is some short-term cost implications there for residents, what we are in fact doing is, is planning ahead for the future to be able to provide a much more heavily subsidised waste disposal for the community. We understand that the community, you know, would like tip vouchers or the like, but our infrastructure and our cost structures right now don't allow for that. However, by implementing some of these changes now to fund infrastructure, to fund diversion of waste from landfill, to fund recycling, we will be able to pass on those significant benefits to the community in the future.
Thank you Mr Madigan, thank you Chair.
Any further questions for Mr Madigan? Thank you. Mayor?
Chair Mayor speaks to the relevant council office in regards to the footpath dining fees.
Yes, we'll have a look at who we have. The acting general manager for PRS is coming forward.
Morning councillors, Brett Davy, Acting General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Through the chair, I said I see that we were looking at footpath dining fees. At the moment we've waived those because of COVID and other things. So could you please explain what this report is proposing?
So footpath dining fees apply for businesses that seek to obviously have footpath dining. We still have the ability to undertake flood relief waiver, which has been separately adopted by council. So this allows for us to continue to charge fees for those areas that haven't been subject to flood relief. And of course we'll apply flood relief to the relevant areas.
Okay, so at the moment we've, we've waived the footpath dining fees.
Yep.
And we actually return money back to residents, to those business owners. So what, are you proposing the fact that these fees come back and we don't do the waiver or what's the proposal?
I'll have to check the effect of the waiver and the relationship to the fee. I'm sorry, I haven't prepared for that, but I can do that for the council.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions Chair, thank you.
Any further questions from the committee? Thank you Mr Davy.
Thank you.
If I may Chair, on page 31, there is an error. The figures for unpowered and powered sites are, I think inverted. If you look at page 78, in the, in the attachments, it's listed correctly. But at, at the moment in the report, it's, it's cheaper to have a powered site at the Rosewood Showgrounds than an unpowered site.
Yeah, we've been notified of that transposition error, which I was about to discuss. The way I view this, this issue this morning is that the recommendation before us is to adopt the fees and charges as detailed in attachment one. For the public record, I'm happy for the report to be corrected. But the recommendation as it stands still is adopting attachment one, and attachment one is correct. So there's no issue with the recommendation. But as I said, more than happy for the report to be corrected this morning, if that's what the committee determines.
Thank you. Thank you Chair.
All right, any further?
May I speak with a relevant council officer on the changes to the parks, sporting grounds and facilities? In regards, obviously there's a change in the fee structure there.
All right. Mr Stewart's coming forward.
Don Stewart, Manager of Community and Cultural Services, morning.
Thank you, through the, the chair, Mr Stewart. I note there were quite a few changes when it comes to how fees will be charged for sporting fields. The briefings we've had beforehand was to show that no sporting club will be worse off. Do you mind just giving the highlights of the changes and why? And, and the consultation that's occurred with sporting clubs to date?
Sure, late last year, Sport and Recreation conducted a community engagement session where we invited a number of clubs to attend, where we presented to the clubs some benchmarks amongst other councils and how they charge their fees and charges and what rates we pay, or they pay here and what they are paid in other locations. We took that feedback on board and in the period since, we've been working towards trying to establish a more favourable model, both for council but also for the community user groups. That model ended up with what is now in front of us all, which is a, I guess a loyal, not a loyalty, but a, a payment scheme that's not dissimilar to our rates where we pay in advance, we receive a discount. So that was encouraging, I guess great or good financial management behaviour. But we also took into consideration what happens during the seasons, both in summer and winter, where weather conditions render the fields unplayable. And most of our user groups actually pay their lighting fees in advance for the season. That's the second discount that we would like to, to apply, which is what we're calling a weather or a lighting discount. Based on the last 12 months, a large number of credit notes are issued. There is a significant amount of administration required to issue that in terms of approvals, then going into the relevant platforms to generate those credit notes. This was all aimed at trying to minimise that request on a, on a regular basis. But also to, I, I guess, encourage club to be a little bit more financially prudent in the way in which they run their facilities on an annual basis. We looked at the numbers, we determined what discount could be accommodated. That provided obviously a financial benefit for the club, but also, you know, a benefit for council in terms of productivity and efficiency in the business. We, we also looked at the, the waiving of the bond. That's a significant impost for a number of our clubs, in particular the smaller ones, at $500 for a clubhouse bond securing the facility. I guess we wanted to remove, we're assuming you'll do damage to our clubs and our facilities and rather let them have that $500, use that for a much better benefit. And obviously we're able to control repairs and maintenance to our facilities if they are damaged by the clubs through management of access to the, the asset anyway. So we saw overall a very positive outcome for the community, but equally for council in terms of, as I said, our business efficiencies and productivity.
Thank you Mr Stewart, and how's the consultation been going with the clubs? Has each club been consulted one-on-one or we were about to do that, what's, where are we at with that?
I haven't consulted one-on-one with the clubs. What I intend to do is identify our, a cross-section of clubs, given that we do have very large clubs of nearly a thousand members versus clubs of eight members. And they all pay very similar rates or currently very similar rates. We would consult with, I guess, the identified key clubs in most sports, we would cover all disciplines. We would have an informal discussion with them, we would show them the benefits of. And we would probably look to run in parallel, I guess, a similar charging regime. It's, the current fees would be applied, but we would run the recommended changes and see whether or not we do have an uplift, I guess, a positive outcome for council as opposed to a negative one for the user group. That way we would be sure that all clubs will be of benefit to it. Because obviously we've looked at the more detailed clubs who have clubhouses, multiple fields, significant lighting hours. We'd have a very, very high level of comfort that the most simple of, you know, users would have a positive benefit as well.
And I noticed with the briefing we had, Mr Stewart, that having two years, rather than just doing year by year, and I know in discussions with the clubs that that is a far preferable outcome for them.
Yes, currently we run seasonal permits, which is effectively six months. That's a significant amount of administration both for both the clubs and for council. Our recommendation would be to move to longer tenure agreements whereby they essentially are agreeing to, and we're agreeing to accommodate their tenure for up to three years, I should say. But it would be charged on an annual basis so that they're not having to reach in, you know, to their finances to pay in advance. It gives them that security of tenure for such things as grant applications, which have, have always been challenging because they've only got a six-month tenure at the moment. This will give them benefit in that space and council will just need to accommodate accordingly when it comes to those grant application approvals which we need to provide.
Thank you Mr Stewart, thank you Chair.
Mr Davy wishes to add something?
Morningya and councillors, sorry, I've just been informed on the footpath dining that the previous resolution does cease on 30th of June. And so the fees will continue to apply from July.
Thank you very much Mr Davy, thank you Chair.
Thank you Mr Davy. Any further questions this morning? I've been informed by the acting CEO that the transposition error can be fixed administratively, so we don't require an extra recommendation this morning.
Thank you Chair.
No worries. Any discussion on fees and charges before we vote on the matter this morning? Mayor?
If I may, I, I highlight on page 29 the library services. Really pleased to see the council waiver those fees for overdue library items. If you've lost the book, you still have to pay for it. As, as a part of a defence family, we've moved around a bit. This is the only council I've ever encountered in all my time, that once you bring the book back, they still charge you the overdue fees. So I'm delighted to see a change here. I think we should be doing everything we can to encourage people to use our libraries. And sometimes things just, people get busy and I, I believe that if you lose the book, you should definitely have to pay for it. So I'm delighted to see a change in this position here.
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Chair.
Any further discussion from the committee? There being no further discussion, I'll put the recommendation to the vote, those in favour. That's unanimous and carried. We'll move along to our last item this morning, the extension of membership to Ordinate Risk Management Committee final full year term. I requested some further information for this matter and I've sent that to you all, and I think you've all read it. In addition, councillor Doyle, who is a, has been granted a leave of absence for this meeting, sent an email to us all last night. sent an email to us all last night where she remarked that Dr Quail has been a very good member of the Audit and Risk Management Committee in her opinion. So I thought it was important to say that before we get into it. Are there any questions of the relevant officer this morning on this matter? Would any members of the committee like to move the recommendation? Councillor Kunselman, seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion? Councillor Kunselman?
Thank you Chair, as a member of the Audit and Risk Committee, I fully support Dr Quail's continuation. For, for all of the reasons that councillor Doyle said, well expressed.
Thank you Chair, I just want to thank you very much for forwarding on the CV and other, other documents on, on Dr Quail. And my next thing was to ask councillor Kunselman what her views were as well, sitting on the IRMC. So thank you very much for providing that, thank you Chair.
Certainly, only two, two councillors run the Audit and Risk Management Committee, so they have a bit more insight into its operation. I'm more than comfortable with the recommendation personally, so I'll be supporting it. Is there any further discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote then, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. There's no notices of motion this morning or indeed matters arising, so I'll declare the meeting closed at 9:54am. How long would we like for a break? All right, the next meeting will be on at 10:30, even though it's not really my decision to make, but it's kind of how it happens. It's a convention.